Call this meeting to order. At this time, we would like to have a word of solace. Thank you. I will ask Councilman Mr. Michael Crisp if he believes into the pledge.
Let the regions stood by of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Want to welcome each of you to the Georgetown City Council Meeting for Monday, April the 14th, 2025. A reminder that we acted, reminder one of a decorum that we expect at all times, and we ask that you remember that at all times. At this time, roll call.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Hampton.
Mr. Minkie.
Present.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell.
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sings.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for the approval minutes from April 8th, 2025. Okay, motion made by Mr. Hampton, second made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Item number four, you should have received counsel, received what the check register. If you have received that, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect that you all have received. Going to switch the agenda order because of that we have a, well, I want to say outstanding group of men here that has represented this, this city in a, in a outstanding way. Been here for six years and doing a, winning a state championship is something to be talked about, and we are proud of them, and so we want to, before I do the, we're going to do a proclamation, I have some pens that I will give to Coach Page here and just meant to hand out to you, to you all, but before I do that, I want to also say how proud we are of that, and also for your principal, who I didn't get the communication part in a timely fashion to her, that she had a conflict and couldn't be here tonight, but she's very, very proud of you all, so is this city, because you have represented yourself well, and you're being talked about, and we're just so happy for that. So, at this time, Madam Clerk, if you would read the proclamation.
Proclamation in honor of the Great Crossing High School Boys Basketball Team, 2025 UK Healthcare Boys Basketball Sweet 16 State Champions. Whereas under the leadership of head coach Steve Page, the 2024-2025 Great Crossing Boys Basketball Team went on a 27-game winning streak to finish the season with a 35-4 record and win the 2025 UK Healthcare Boys Basketball Sweet 16, and whereas this was the first KHSA A state championship title for the Great Crossing Boys Basketball Team, following back-to-back 11th region titles, and whereas in addition to claiming the championship title, three Warhawks were named to the all-tournament team. Vince Dawson, Gage Richardson, and Malika Moreno, who was also named the most valuable player, and whereas the accomplishments and character of the athletes on this team are admired and respected by the Georgetown community, and whereas the city of Georgetown would like to recognize the 2024-2025 Great Crossing Boys Basketball Team for representing the Georgetown Scott County community in such a positive way, as well as congratulate them on their outstanding season and victory. Now therefore, the mayor, City Council of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky hereby recognize and congratulate the 2024-2025 Great Crossing Boys Basketball Team for their excellence and resilience and wish them continued success. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Georgetown to be affixed this 14th day of April in the year 2025.
I can't get along this up here. I want you to this person, I'll be off before. Coach Page, if you could come up, please, sir. I want to present you with the pen, if you hand it out to your, to your young man, want to bring a graduation certificate, to find outstanding job. He was one of my former students. You know, that people who started in this community come out and become great leaders through our union. Thank you so much. We'll get a mugshot here. Malika, come on up, guys. Come on up. If you guys come up, if you all have nothing else, stand right.
We say Malika can't stand in front.
Are you seeing Ryan's face? Ryan, thank you.
I probably have a crew that I'm not calling.
Here, hold on. See faces. You'll have to get back. I need to be able to see your face. Gage, face. I can't see Ryan's face. Sorry, you're gorgeous, you need a picture.
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
I remember, yeah. I remember.
Is that the new chrome book?
I remember Steven Plante.
This is the one I got when I took over the job.
I don't think we've done it, have we?
No. It should be soon.
Dead. It can't be that big.
All right. Okay, we are ready to continue the meeting here, and we'll follow on our agenda. At this time, the events application, item A, which is the Scott County School Parade, Graduate Parade. All right. And retirees coming up, well, future retirees coming up.
When's your last day?
Do what?
When's your last day?
Uh, June 30th, I guess. June 30th. And before you, I want to say, we really appreciate all you've done for Scott County Schools.
Absolutely.
Really, thank you. Okay.
Just asking for our date there on the graduate parade that we've been able to do the last several years, where the kids will start at, shoot.
Military.
Military, and then come around Main Street, and then back around. We use the 4th of July parade route, and it works out pretty well. It usually takes less than 30 minutes. Once we get going, several hundred students and parents all lined up, and hardest thing is make them slow down and walk slowly so they can get pictures with their parents as they, as they go by, so it's been a really neat experience over the last several years, so.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion's made by Ms. Brent. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamrick. Are there further questions and or comments? And for your, this is a rolling movement, so it don't, it won't take.
It won't take very long.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion pass. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item B, Georgetown College commencement.
Getting in, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Randy Jones, I'm the Director of Department of Campus Safety for Georgetown College. We have applied for street closures for Saturday, May the 17th, for the Georgetown College commencement. We have about 247 undergraduate students who are going to be receiving their degrees and 60 master degree candidates over the course of that weekend. What we have requested, sir, is following the same protocols that we have in the past, this closure of Robert and Wilson Drive and College Street from in front of Anderson Hall to Night Hall. This is to request barricades and one marked police unit and an EMS unit for our guests. We're anticipating roughly about 2,500 visitors between family members, the Board of Trustees, and some distinguished guests that have been invited to this year's commencement.
All right.
Motion made.
Motion made by Ms. Mitchell, second by Mr. Minkie. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion of the Georgetown College commencement signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, the Scott County Farmers Market.
Hi. Here today, excited about being able to use the new pavilion this year. We're very excited about it, and we've come to you with the hope that, our one concern is in the past when we've had cars parked, we've been able to kind of work around them. This time, because of the way the parking lot goes, if a car is parked under there, it will block the walkway, and so we would like permission to be able to ask the police to help us if there is a car that's parked under there. We are planning to put signs up, to put signs on cars the next few weeks prior to it, to just let people know, to contact the different Georgetown city groups that actually park their cars under there every night and for the weekend, so that that's taken care of. And I'm here also for the, well, start there.
All right. Do you have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Hampton. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second made by, oh, Mr. Stone, thank you.
Question, question, ma'am. Her first motion is to ask to have the police remove people's cars under there, that's parking under there. Should there be some kind of sign, notice, put it up down there, like permanent, like do not park under pavilion from Friday, it's, I don't know, 8:00 PM to Monday at something like that, instead of, instead of just saying the police go down there and move cars?
Well, I guess we can try to start that and see if we can put those signs up, if y'all can do that, but I'm sure the police will probably, will probably go down that way anyway, as part of their patrol, but.
I think it'd be hard to just move a car just because it was parked there, if they didn't know that they weren't supposed to be parked there.
Okay.
Right.
Something I can look into to make sure, to see what we can do with that.
I think, I think we need signage.
Okay. All right.
Is that something the city would do, or is that something we would need to do?
I would say that that's something that you all need to do, I think you all putting that together. I guess we could do that? Okay.
That'd be city.
Thank you for correcting me on that.
Public Works could do, put that up and, and make the signs.
So you asked me to get Public Works to actually put that in play? Is that what you want?
Yes, so people would be aware not to, and then if they're parked there, well, then the police could tow them away without any problem. Isn't that correct, Todd?
Okay. That would, and it wouldn't, it would be, if a car is towed, it would be on the city's dime to tow the car and move it to the closest location that is out of the event, but, you know, just onto the other side of the parking lot, so it would not be, they tow it completely away and put it in pound, and so there would be no cost to, that's the way it's always been in the past, no cost to the citizen.
So my question is, do we need to redo the motion to where, to change it, to where, still have the police being there and actually have signage put on there, that way, I think that's where.
I think it needs to go to Lori, too, because she's over that, so.
Okay, so.
I, I, I might, it's up to the council, since we got a first and a second, but I might not vote tonight on this part of it, but vote to allow them to, the second part to allow them to have it.
Well, we can, I believe we can amend, we can amend the motion to do that and take care of that.
She's here just asking about the dates, some of the events, and the police, those telling the police service a support component of her event, so that's what she's here for. We can certainly proceed that outside of this motion.
Mayor, I just also know, I know on the inter-local committee agenda, this is on the agenda for this week.
For tomorrow.
Right.
So, we may have something that comes out of that as well.
Okay. So, do you want to still go with the motion? Do you want to amend this motion to?
We can amend it to include, you know, signage.
But before we do, I think the thing that she's asking for now is just doing, being to having the event.
Let's do it the easy way. Okay. Withdraw your motion. I withdraw my second.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve her, the use of the pavilion for the farmer's market.
All right. All right.
And access to support of the police if needed.
All right. Now, we have a motion made by Mr. Stone.
I do have a question for clarification for the scope of the application. Are you asking for one date, or are you looking for the season?
For the season.
Okay.
It would be for the season.
So, now that.
Yeah, the season's fine, yeah. Yeah, the season's fine, yeah.
Okay, so you, the motion is that to allow this event for the entire season, which starts, I think, May the 10th, and goes through October.
Through the end of September, the last Saturday of September.
Last Saturday of September, okay.
Well, and I did put in, we do have some pop-up markets, and there are some specific dates, October.
It's the 18th, November 29th, and December 13th.
Okay.
And they're all on the application.
Yes.
Okay, so, motion made by Mr. Stone, second by Mr. Hampton, are there further questions and or comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion pass, thank you.
Okay.
And item D, I guess you're back here for the Master of Gardening, Master Gardener Garden Expo, okay.
Right, it's for the exact same thing for the May 3rd, because the extension office, when we began planning, was supposed to be building, they were going to add to the building. It hasn't started yet, but we needed another place, and so I worked with Lori to set up this. And since it is the Saturday prior to Winter Farmer's Market, there's not going to be people used to not parking there, so.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Hamrick, second made by Mr. Minkie, are there further questions and or comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion pass. Item number six is public comments. Once again, remind you that when you're up there, please state your name at the microphone. You will have four minutes in which to state your business to this council. Madam Plurk will have the time running, and she will let you know at three-minute mark. And then, at that time, she will let you know that four minutes is up. And we ask that you be respectful, that you be at that time, please finish and take your seat, so that others may be heard at this time. First is, we have Teresa Fraley and Jamie Hillard, is that correct? Thank you, and speaking on, correct.
Hi, you want me to start? Okay, we're here to, we don't even know why we're here, if this is the right place to be, but we want to talk about Winterwood Properties. I just recently moved from one, my daughter lives there now. There is mold problem, apparently the newer part of the Overlook Apartments, her apartment flooded seven times prior to her moving in, so she's the first person to live there. We've done mold tests. Speaking of my apartment that I moved out of, I begged them and told them that I was consistently sick, that water was flowing under the building, nothing was done, I was called crazy, and I moved. I still am having health issues from that, and my daughter, her apartment has water in her pantry and mold around the baseboards, and there's water seeping up under, like the cracks in the floor. A plumber came today and said that it was actually sewer, sewer water. And so, and they're not doing anything, they're going to replace the wood around the baseboards, and they're going to paint it. But we have five kids in this house who run around barefooted, and they're telling us it's sewer water. So, I feel like Winterwood in itself, with any of their communities, do not care, it's cover it up and move on.
I did mold tests.
Yeah, we have a mold test, and we have a lab analysis.
Sounds like a code enforcement issue.
Well, when I moved out of Elk River Apartments, I called code enforcement, and I was told that they did not handle that. And I was also called the Health Department. And so, we're just at wits' end. Elk River is a 55 and older community, there's many residents that don't leave that apartment. And, you know, I can't leave there in good faith, and it really has affected my health. My blood sugar's gone up, her blood sugar's gone up, I've never had blood sugar problems before. She now has thyroid issue problems, and our home doctor doesn't handle any of that. So, to get any of the mold in your body testing has to come out of pocket. I am definitely suffering, and when I walk now into a place that has mold in it, this lady here lives where my daughter lives.
Two apartments down.
Yeah, two apartments down, and now she's on oxygen. So, this whole bottom floor has flooded in her apartment complex at the Overlook. They left my daughter to clean that up, they sent no one to clean the sewage, they said it was her responsibility. And prior to her moving in, and it flooded seven times, there's markings around the floor where you can see. There was, like, this much water must have stood in that apartment, based on how the wood is buckling and bubbling. So, I just think Winterwood needs to be addressed. Now.
Could I have a point of information there?
Do you want to say something?
Just where it is.
What's the location?
It's River, River Chase Path.
It's across from Dover Manor, right off Scotland Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And what's your name again?
Jamie Hillard.
What's your name again?
Jamie Hillard.
Jamie Hillard, and I think Teresa Fraley?
Teresa Fraley, yes.
Okay.
You already know the line, Anita Smith, yes.
And Ms. Anita Smith, okay. Okay, thank you all so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Steven Price, climate warming.
My name is Steven Price, I'm Georgetown native and resident, and I'm here tonight to call your attention to an observation I made this past Saturday in the parking lot behind the Sonic Restaurant on South Broadway, between Sonic and where the Bargain Hunt used to be. A two-and-a-half-ton truck sat there for I don't know how long, before I got there, with the engine running and curtains drawn, all around the cab, across the windshield, across the side windows, somebody was sleeping in the truck with the engine running. For how long before I got there, I don't know, but I was there for an hour, making phone calls to Councilman Minkie, Councilman Chris, Councilwoman Sonia Wilkins-Brent, and Councilman Todd Stone, to ask them, and I'm here to ask you again, all of you, to consider drafting an ordinance that would prohibit anyone from sleeping in a motor vehicle with the engine running. And to, if somebody, good, more power to somebody who wants to sleep in a vehicle, if that's what they have to do and want to do, but require them to use blankets or a sleeping bag, rather than to allow them to heat the entire chamber, the entire passenger quarter, the passenger compartment, when a blanket and a sleeping bag will do the job. There's no sense generating heat, running the engine of an automobile to generate heat, when a man or a woman or a child has body heat, and all you have to do is catch that body heat in a blanket or a sleeping bag. And this, when it comes to climate change, if you doubt that climate change exists, everybody has reason, good reason, to doubt journalism. But the consensus of journalism, from the New York Times to the LA Times, to the newspapers from Europe, the consensus is that climate change is really happening, and it needs to be dealt with. And I can tell you that as somebody who raises crops, it needs to be dealt with, because I'm going to spend, instead of raising crops, I'm spending all my time fighting the hot sun. This is a publication of the economic, of the, it's prepared by the International Chamber of Commerce, published November 7th, 2024. They say, "Climate change is driving extreme weather events." I assume that we could, we could call that the recent rainfall we had, an extreme weather event. "Climate change is driving extreme weather events with a marked 83% increase in recorded climate disasters between 1980 and 2019." You can believe that or not, I don't know whether to believe it or not, but they go on the corner, based, time up?
No, we still have 45 seconds.
Time up?
No. We still have time.
Okay. "Based on nearly 4,000 events across six continents from 2014 to 2013, we estimate economic losses from these extreme weather events at $2 trillion in 2023 prices. We are part of that economic pattern that's impacted by climate warming. And our findings indicate that without enhanced climate action and mitigation efforts, the economic burden of climate-related extreme weather events will persist in likely growth. And if you doubt the journalists, and you doubt the International Chamber of Commerce, maybe you'll believe that NASA, National Air, 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 National Space Administration said, this is our report July 22nd, 2024, is the hottest day on record. I ask you, pass an ordinance that prohibits people from sleeping in a motor vehicle with the engine running."
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Price. Next, we have, is it Matt Cravens, or Matt? He's going to talk about chickens in town, city limits, correct?
Yes, my name's Matt Cravens, Georgetown resident. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight. Wanted to speak, you guys are going to be talking on it later, it looks like, but kind of wanted to provide some context as to why we're here tonight and how your discussion tonight might affect others. The kids around me are students of Keystone Montessori down here on Hamilton Street, and they, Keystone's been maintaining chickens for quite a while now. It's a big part of the kids' school in their education. They learn a lot about animal care, food cycle, responsibility, things of this nature, and they've all, some of these children, most of them actually have written letters to you guys, kind of letting you know why it's important to them. I'm not clear on exactly what the issue is with having chickens, or, you know, where we are. My understanding is that there isn't an ordinance right now, and so that may default to another ordinance, and the solution might just be that we need an ordinance to allow, so that these kids could keep their chicken coops and their chickens, and maintain that education. You know, so just wanted to provide some context for you guys as to how it might affect folks in the city, and, you know, ask that if it is that simple, that we could create an ordinance, maybe we could look at some ordinances around us for guidance, you know, to work out particulars, how many one might have, or, you know, if, things like that. So, appreciate you letting us share tonight. Any of you all want to say anything? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that has, that want to address the council and was not, did not sign the sheet? All right, thank you very much. Next, according to item seven, mayor comments, of course, did the proclamation. Wanted to give the executive order for Georgetown Housing Authority, format for Ms. Glenna Dees. This is a process that took a long time, want to remind, let council know that on this process that because of statutes, there are certain parameters that you have to have for Democrats that represents an equal political part of this, and so you got to make sure you have the right balance on each end there. So, it took me a while to go through this process and finally found somebody that we needed that will be able to help with that, and we sent you her background, and that hopefully, I would like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, wait a minute, who, did you not get one?
I did not get one.
Oh, did we not? Okay, I'm sorry.
The resume she submitted wasn't in a readable format, so it wasn't, when I went to send it, it wasn't transmitting via email, so I can get that out either, once, I can't even open it, so we've got to contact her, but did want to apologize for that.
Okay, all right. We can, if you want to wait until that, to get to your council, we can do that at that time? So, we'll wait and we'll put that on for the April 28th, next meeting, is that correct? And we can put that on at that time, all right? So, we'll switch it over and do it at that time. Item C, the theme of BRIC program update. As you'll recall, on February 20th, February meeting, where we did a resolution accepting a grant.
It authorized the application.
Excuse me?
It authorized the application.
It authorized, thank you again, for authorizing the grant application for that. And I want to let you know that that funding is no longer available because the federal government has ended that program. So, I just want you all to get that update, all right? Next, on the agenda, have the departmental reports, we have police and 911 dispatch. So, and again, we ask them to come up and to actually give a, kind of a, some information to this council as what they do, a little bit about how they operate, and a little bit on that aspect, because we want to educate you all on that, and I believe they gave you a little bit of a packet on that that you have here that you can, you can look at. So, at this time, I will let them come up. Who's coming first? Assistant Chief Nash, you going to take, start this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I've been told that's what I'm supposed to do, so.
All right.
I'm going to do that. So, in your packet, you're going to have, obviously, the PowerPoint, which is on top, and then at the very bottom, or the back of the packet, there's a seven-page information sheet that kind of goes more in depth with the information that's on the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. So, what we've done is we've taken our department overview, broken it down to explain kind of the day-to-day events that happen in the police department. This slide right here is the structure of the police department, it outlines how our organization is laid out. So, it starts with the chief on the left side, and works its way down all the way to officers and dispatchers. On the top part of the organizational chart, that is Captain Lodel, and over on that side is the administration part and our criminal investigations, along with our SROs and our traffic unit. And then, on the bottom part of that, the one below the captain is my position, the assistant chief, which is the operations side, which covers mainly patrol and dispatch, so. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go to the next slide. All right, so source of funding, these are just an overview of the different types of funding sources that we currently have at the police department, how we operate, or how we receive funding to operate day-to-day. Obviously, the first one is our general fund, which is the primary funding source for the police department. We go into alcohol regulatory fees, and federal grants, state grants, asset forfeiture. So, the federal grants are listed inside of that packet, but some of them are Victims Against Women's Act, our Justice Assistance Act grant, the FBI, DEA, overtime, where we have task force officers on those, with those departments, they fund us to allow some of our officers to work with them. Then state grants also are covered with the Homeland Security Grant, Justice and Public Safety Grant, and then our Highway Safety Grant, which is, helps with our traffic unit. And then asset forfeiture is when we take a piece of property that is awarded to us from the courts due to a criminal act, and we turn that over, and can use those funds to buy equipment for our officers. And then court-ordered fines and restitution, citations and parking ticket revenue, fee-based services, reimbursement for Scott County Schools, so they provide us a reimbursement for our school resource officers, and then donations and sponsorships, which is usually contributed to us from local businesses through our Citizens Police Academy to help us buy equipment, such as the drone we bought not too long ago. But some of the court-ordered fines and restitution, that stuff, we're going to go into on a different slide. Next slide, please. So, this slide right here just outlines some, main, the main things that we do, the services we provide. Obviously, we provide a patrol and emergency response, that's our number one and our main call volume driver. And then criminal investigations, they kind of go into depth with felonies and investigate things that need more attention to them. Traffic enforcement and safety, which is new to us, but like you'll see in the slides later on. later on, it has done some good, and we're starting to see some return on investment there. Community outreach, which is something we're continuously doing through our community relations officer and just patrol officers in general. School resource officer, crisis intervention, specialized units, which goes from bike unit to special response unit, multiple units that we kind of break officers up and they do individualized specialized things. And then the training section, which allows us to train our officers, to keep them up to date with current things that are going on in the world, in the United States, to help us be one of the best police departments in Kentucky. And then records and civilian services, which provides our community with reports and accident reports when they need them. And then events board and our victim advocacy and support referrals. So victim advocate does a hu, plays a huge role in our department to help victims work through the process, because not, not many people have to go through that process and it's sometimes confusing. Next slide.
All right. So under revenues, what we've done is we've included the last two years, the current year, what we estimate will get through the, the rest of this fiscal year, and then our projected for next fiscal year. So this is broken up into four categories. Court fines and court costs are kind of two in the same. Any citations that are issued come with certain court costs, we get a percentage of that. Parking fines, those are self-explanatory. And then our police services is anytime someone comes into the lobby and gets fingerprinted for like nurses registry and other stuff like that. Reports, whenever they pay to pick up a copy of a report, and then reimbursement from the Scott County school systems are all in that category. Next slide. And then our expenditures, again, this is the last two years, this year projected and current, as well as next fiscal year. And this is broken down into salaries, benefits, contractual services, materials and supplies, and then all of our capital expenses. Any questions on that? Next slide, please.
All right. So now we're going to go into staffing. Just kind of gives you an overview of what we've, we've looked like over the last five So we have remained the same with a few additions from 2020 to 2025. We've increased the biggest, obviously, from 23 to 25, and that's a large part to the growth in the city. Some of the requests that we're asking for in the future, for future budgets, is adding another captain, adding a, I'm sorry, adding a body worn camera administrator, which is on the next slide, if you don't mind to go there. I believe it's on the, we have, we have multiple slides of staffing because there's so much on one. But really, our, our body worn camera administrator that we currently have, he is, you know, he's received a lot of work from the implementation of body worn cameras. He is, and we, we knew that, but we didn't know what the magnitude of it would be. So he, working as hard as he can and doing the best he can, we, we identify he needs some help in that area. Also, safety officers is something we're going to present. They can take about 10% of the calls that our police officers can take. That's something we have identified by looking at what we would allow them to take. And then obviously, we would ask for five more officers based on what we, what we have projected and been communicative to you all about. But we, we did identify 10% of that, the police officer role could be handled by a safety officer, and the other 90% would be handled by police only. And then we have one job change, reclassification change, which would be our administrative assistant two, to an office administrator, just based on the job description that she has and her role that she has in the police department. Any question on, on staffing?
I'm a little confused with how many extra officers you're, you're asking for.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if you could go over that again.
Okay. So we're going to be asking for?
So you said one more captain.
One more captain.
And, and a body camera administrator.
Civilian.
Civilian, okay. So that would not be.
That one specifically is the, is listed as the open records clerk and the crime analyst. So we were looking at basically supplementing our current body worn camera administrator with some assistance with the, the volume of open record requests that he's been doing.
Right.
And then we'll talk a little bit later about kind of the role that the crime analyst will come, kind of a dual, dual purpose in one, in one role, if you will.
Okay. And then two safety officers?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you said five more officers?
Yes. So the safety officers would be civilian. They would not have a role as a police officer.
I got you. All right.
The five police officers would be sworn personnel. So really, we would be asking for six sworn personnel with the captain and five officers, and then three civilian personnel.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Can I clarify it?
Yep.
Okay.
So is it, is it nine positions plus one upgrade?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next slide. I believe we've covered the following. Yes. Any other questions on that before we move on? All right. Next slide. So this goes into the service data. There's two slides here. I'm not going to read off this one. So the back, I'll read off the back one because I could read it easier. This shows our calls for service progressively over the last five years, and we have seen a 10% increase in calls for service since 2021 until now. And that's consistently going up. Some things to point out is, we estimate, so if you look at 2023 and 2024, our traffic collisions have gone down, and we estimate those to go down, and we contribute that to the traffic enforcement, the traffic unit that we implemented. That has helped slow people down and, and keep people aware on the roadway. But also, I would like to point out, open records request. If you look at the open records request, one of the reasons we're asking for that extra body is we have seen a huge increase in open records requests since we've implemented the body cams, and we are on track to blow last year's number out of the water. So we just don't know how many, but mainly they're for police. And then, next slide, please. And then this slide just, it continues on, it shows some different calls for service that we would utilize to alleviate some of patrol with those safety officers. So funeral escorts, debris in the roadways, parking problems, vehicle lockouts, and traffic control calls can all be supplemented through a safety officer, which would alleviate some call volume to patrol to allow them to respond to more serious calls for service. And then at the bottom, you can see some of these things we implemented just a couple of years ago. I think the recovery support team is probably the longest living with Angel Program and post overdose response. Even though the post overdose response number has gone up, the number of overdoses around us has gone up tremendously, and we are staying pretty much in the same area, which is a good, a good thing. That, that means that we are not experiencing the amount of overdoses that other people are, which I contribute that to, the three individuals in our police department who go out every day and try to prevent that from happening. So those are some of the good things that are happening and some of the proactive things that we have been allowed to do through the city council, through the mayor's office, to just add that benefit to our citizens.
So we did a SWOT analysis. I'm going to basically give you the overview, and then I'm going to hand it over to our chief to kind of go into more depth on all the elements that kind of went into this. So one of the, so the strengths are basically the things that we recognize that our organization, I guess, let me backtrack a little. So this right here is a snapshot of where our organization stands today. So all the strengths today, all of our weaknesses today, our opportunities, and then the threats. So our strengths, we've got a great community partnerships, as well as we've, we've worked really hard to foster high public trust. Proactive, mission-oriented leadership, providing a clear vision for strategic growth. Consistent delivery of high-quality services by our sworn personnel despite staffing challenges. Strong organizational, organizational culture emphasizing professionalism and accountability, and a commitment to continuous evolution and adaptability to community needs. Some of the weaknesses, our staffing growth does not match the rapid population and service demanding increases. Our limited physical facility hampers our flexibility and recruitment capability. Our high frequency of public service calls, they strain our current resources and response capabilities. Absence of a scalable solution for effectively managing our lower priority calls. And these are some of the ones that don't necessarily have to be handled by a police officer, but currently they are. And then our reactive operational tempo leaves minimal time for proactive strategic planning and development, i.e. we can use some more help at the top, which is, hence the reason for the, the operations captain position. So some opportunities that we see are implementing civilian safety officer roles to alleviate pressure on sworn officers. As Assistant Chief Nash mentioned, we've identified that approximately 10% of our call volume would be able to be handled by these safety officers. Number two, strategic facility expansion planning to enhance long-term operational efficiency. So you'll get to hear a little bit more about some of the plans that we have to be able to do, a plan for a building expansion, as well as hopefully be able to expand our parking capabilities. Number three, investment in a combined crime analyst and open records clerk. This will improve data-driven resource allocation through the crime analyst part and streamline records management. As I mentioned earlier, and as you all saw, we're on track to do over 400 open records requests, which is almost double from where we were two years ago. Number four, increasing sworn officer staffing to improve shift stability, reduce burnout, and enhance overall coverage. So this speaks specifically to the five sworn officers that we're asking for in this budget. And number five is development of on-call incentives and career advancement initiatives to help us with our retention efforts and also just to cultivate internal leadership. And you'll get to hear more about these two specific things when the chief comes up. Some threats that we've identified, continued population growth and commercial development surpassing the pace of department staffing expansions. As a chief, Assistant Chief Nash mentioned earlier, we saw a 10% increase in call volume just from, from last year to this year, and we anticipate around that same projected by the time we reach the end of this calendar year. Number two, rising demand for services is potentially jeopardizing response times and community satisfaction. You'll hear from the chief a little bit later that we've still worked really hard to maintain our emergency response, but one of the metrics we've identified is that our non-emergency or our lower priority call response has increased just due to the volume of calls. Number three, national trends of reduced interest in law enforcement careers negatively impacting recruitment and hiring timelines. So we just kind of throw this out there because we recognize that not everybody wants to do this job anymore, and so we've had to be creative. You all have partnered with us on that, with ideas such as approving our recruitment vehicle. We're constantly looking for ideas that you guys have given to us in terms of some of the connections you all have with higher education institutions, as well as working with our HR to, to kind of take advantage of some of these online platforms that weren't otherwise available a few years ago. Number four, staff burnout and overextension leading to decreased morale and increased attrition rates. So again, we want to identify, how can we supplement our manpower with the five officers and the two safety officers, as well as the captain, to give us a little help at the top, just so that we are, aren't burning ourselves out and so that we're still able to, able to provide services. And number five, growing community expectations for police involvement in noncriminal activities and events, further stretching departmental resources. I don't have to tell you all, I know you all are doing the event ordinance, and it's just something that we're happy to assist with, but it's also something that's a growing need within the community. And so we just want to be able to stay on top of that. So we have some goals and objectives, timeline. Again, I'm just going to kind of do the high level of these and let the chief go into the specifics. So our first goal is to increase patrol staffing. This will be done by hiring five additional sworn officers. That will help primarily at the patrol level, and we hope to have this accomplished within three months of the next fiscal year. Improve operational and strategic capabilities. This is twofold, so we're looking at introducing the open records clerk and the crime analyst role. Again, this will help us be able to identify where we need to deploy our resources from the crime analysis side, as well as help our body worn camera administrator keep up with this growing number of open record requests. And then in terms of the operations captain, just to be able to enhance strategic deployment and operational oversight. As a growing agency, we focus very heavily on making sure that we can get our frontline guys that are delivering service to our community, but we also need to make sure that we have the support at the top to be able to give those guys that are supporting the community what they need. We hope to have that within two months after July 1st. Number three is enhance response efficiency. So this is going to come through the form of civilian safety officers, and they would be able to, like we said earlier, is about 10% of the calls that we currently handle, they would be deployed at the, the times where they would be needed the most to handle those calls for service, and we hope to be able to have that implemented within three months. Number four would be the facility expansion and preparedness. So we'd like to complete facility expansion planning. This will allow us to kind of see what it's going to cost, as well as what other type of design layouts that we would be able to do for our police department, as well as a parking lot construction. And we hope to have this within the next fiscal year, within those 12 months. You'll hear more about that in a little bit. Employee retention and development. Again, I kind of mentioned earlier that we're kind of facing a national, it's a national issue of people not being interested. So we've got really good people at the department, and we'd like to do our best to keep them. And so we'd like to develop and introduce, you'll get to hear about the career development initiative, as well as we want to be able to compensate our detectives that, that are expected to give something that other members of the department aren't, in terms of their ability to stay available for serious crimes. And as you all know, we had a busy week this last week, had a few unfortunate events that made the news, and these are the guys that our patrolmen lean on to come out and be able to dig deep into these serious crimes. And that's something that we would want to implement immediately. And lastly, strengthen community relations, just sustain and enhance proactive community engagement efforts to maintain public trust, and the timeline on that is ongoing. So some performance measures. So for goal one, maintenance or reduction in response times, improve shift coverage. Again, you'll kind of see how our response times for low priority calls has increased. Number two, goal number two, maintain record processing times, as well as the ability to have regular quarterly crime trend reports that will again, help us kind of focus where we need to put our existing personnel, and improve operational coordination with the new captain's role. Number three, reduction of low priority calls handled by sworn officers. This would be with the introduction of the safety officers. Goal number four is going to be a feasibility study for the building expansion completed within 12 months, and we hope to be able to have the parking lot completed within 12 months. Goal number five, we just want to be able to increase officer retention rate through that career development proposal. And number six, just be able to maintain or increase the number of community events that we're currently doing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Algood to, to go into a little more depth.
So first of all, thank you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to bring everything to your attention. I know it's a lot, but I want to assure you or let you know that we've probably spent close to 100 hours, myself, Assistant Chief, Captain, and our lieutenants, getting all this together for y'all, so hopefully can paint a really good picture to you. I assure you, these are the needs of the department and the city. Hopefully, we'll justify these to you and show you that they are not just wants. Our vision for the priorities are being proactive now and for the future. We have a vision of high-quality service, maintaining our strong culture within the agency, and making sure we are actively engaged in our community. We are still the fastest-growing community in the state. We're behind Louisville, Lexington, Bowling Green, Owensboro, and then Georgetown. So the demand for services that are placed upon our agency propose challenges associated personnel, costs, equipment, technology, officer retention, and recruiting. So my job is to make sure the command staff remains committed to looking into the future to keep leading our officers. We develop new leaders, we hold each other accountable, and we do our best to retain our assets, which is our officers. So I want to segue into request, I guess, number one, if you will, the five officers. I'll start out by saying, back in 2019, there was a presentation that was given to city council showing the need for additional police officers based off the calls for service and the rapid growth of the city. Georgetown's population has grown 203% since 1995. From the presentation 2019 until 2025, the population has grown 17%. And if we look forward to 2026, estimated population will be, have grown 21 and a half percent. Also in that presentation, which I'll show you some slides here in a few, the population should be around 43,187. So that being said, the FBI standard is 2.0. So that being said, the FBI standard is 2.4 officers per 1,000 residents, and Kentucky's average is 2.20, and that was in this presentation. In 2019, the Georgetown Police Department had 1.69 police officers per 1,000 residents. Fast forward six years later, today we have 1.7. But the population has continued to grow and grow. Calls for service have grown, keep going, keep going. If we consider the Kentucky average of 2024, we should have 91 police officers. If we use the FBI standard, we should have 99 police officers. If you look ahead to fiscal year '25, 2026, we should have 95 officers, and the Kentucky average would be 103, excuse me, for the FBI average. We get those statistics from the FBI Statistics, Police Employment Data, 2023, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 2023, and we also used World Population Review for Georgetown, 2024. Can you go to the slide that's the historical estimated growth?
Yeah.
So that one there. So the first slide here just shows you, this came from the presentation in 2019, I took that slide. You can see where the population is projected to continue to grow. So if you look at 2025, we're right at 41,000. So we're right on, you know, next year, 43,187 is where, I used that number a while ago to estimate the officers that we should have. So you can see in the next five years, we're pushing 50,000 residents in the city. Next slide. This again was the slide from, that was used in 2019. If you'll look, the FBI standard all the way to the left is 2.4 that I noted. The Kentucky average is 2.2. Georgetown, we're still hanging there at 1.69 or 1.7. But you can see all the other cities around us are higher than that, well above, but that shows you again that still, from 2019 to now, we're still ringing true. Next slide. Calls for service, you can see how it spiked up from 2021, 30,000 calls. Last year was 37, we're projecting we'll be well over 40,000 calls next year. Next slide. So Part One Crimes, those are usually considered your murders, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, auto theft, arson. So if you take a look at that, what really sticks out last year to us is 58 burglaries. We had 37 auto thefts and 385 thefts. I ask myself, are we okay with this at the police department? We're not. I mean, that's a lot of stuff that gets stolen. The reason I put this in here, if we have more officers that can be proactive, that can go to businesses, can go to community meetings and say, hey, here's a way that you can make your business more safe. Here's some things that you can do. Same thing with residents' meetings and things like that, where we can get stuff out to the residents to be able to help us out. This part here, I'm going to go ahead and, things like this, where we're taking the time to do, is part of the things, hopefully the crime analysts, which I'll get to that here in a little bit. That would be some of the things that he or she could do as well, but I'll expand on that. Next slide. So this here is the average response time. Just so you know, right now, on a shift, on first shift, we have four officers and a sergeant. Second shift, we have six officers and a sergeant. And third shift, we have four officers and a sergeant. Why is that important? Well, if you look at some of the calls that we've noted here, these are the calls that generally take more than one officer to handle. So let's start with domestic violence. That should always be a two-officer response. Sometimes that may require supervisors to come, to be there as well. If you look all the way over to 2024, the average time that one or two officers are spending is 40 minutes on a domestic. So if it's on first shift, remember I say we had five officers? So if I got two officers spending 40 minutes on a domestic, I have just a couple other officers left and a sergeant. Let's say that's happening, and then, you know, injury accident, if you look at that down there, they're averaging an hour and 38 minutes to clear. Fatalities were not included, because those can take hours upon hours, sometimes weeks, depending on the magnitude of the investigation. EPL requests, backup, those usually take, could take one or two officers, but it takes a lot of time. You see an hour and 45 minutes. So the officer's talking to the victim, getting their narrative, typing up what they want to submit to the judge for review. It goes to the judge, we have to wait on the judge to sign it, approve it, comes back to the officer, the officer's doing things like that. So there's a lot of downtime with that. Mental subjects, suicidal subjects, you'll see there the same thing, just about two hours. Again, all these calls require two officers to go to, sometimes even more, depending on, you know, how things pan out. We covered injury accidents, that could be, again, two to a whole shift. So if my first shift, I have four officers or five officers and a sergeant, depending on where it's at, I'm depleted, I'm out of manpower. Go down to fights, disputes, threatening calls, we get those constantly. Those average of 30 minutes to clear, unwanted subjects, and so on. So that's why I think it's important for you all to see. Also the report time, so after an officer clears, they may be out on these calls for 45 minutes, hour and a half. What have you, he or she has to come back to the station, or go and sit in their car on their MDT on their computer and type up the report. So that's going to take time. If there's evidence that needs to be submitted at the police department, that takes time. An officer has to go back, fill out more reports, they have to be very detailed, make sure the chain of custody is filled out correctly. So that takes more time, that's not accounted into the calls here. Call response time, if you'll see, high, medium, and low over the past four years. So high priority calls, we're still getting there around five minutes, which is pretty good. So if you call, by the time dispatch gives it to us and we run emergency traffic, we're typically there in five minutes. Medium response call, that could be like a shoplifter, you know, grocery store, whatever, it could be verbal altercation, unwanted subject, something like that, our response time is 10 minutes. But you can see, it's creeping up by two minutes from last year. And then low priority calls, that could be, you know, hey, I've been out of town and come back and I notice my bicycle's stolen out of my garage, what have you. So that's not a priority call. That's something we try to get to as quickly as we can, and that's 11 minutes. Down at the bottom, these numbers aren't exactly accurate because we weren't able to show the exact stop time and start time between shifts because they overlap. So first shift you'll see is from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You kind of get a gist. Second shift is 2:00 PM to midnight, and then third shift is 10 o'clock to 8:00 in the morning. So you kind of have an idea of when the calls are and where the manpower will be needed. Next slide. So with all the growth that we know, there's stuff that's been approved, we know there's been over 5,000 residents approved, the Anderson Commercial, Baptist Health Care, Medical marijuana dispensary, the Gaines Farm, commercial property, there's residential, single-family coming all the way to the Gaines Farm, the Paddix Jennings Farm, Georgetown Commons, on and on and on. We're going to need more officers. To your left, if you'll see the orange, it's going to require us to, we're looking ahead, we're going to have a new response area, which will, the reason we have that is to keep in mind these response times to the five minutes. So if we don't redraw our boundaries and have officers strategically placed in these response areas, the times could be slower to get there. So we're looking to redraw those and be able to staff calls more effectively. Next slide. So we look at police officer injuries. You know, that can affect manpower. So if we have a guy that goes out and gets assaulted or twists his knee wrestling with somebody on a domestic or whatever, that officer's down, we don't know how long it'll be. But, you know, go back to first shift where I have four or five officers, this guy's out, so now they're on minimum shifts. So then if I have an officer that wants to go on vacation, or if we have one in training, first shift could be down to one or two officers and a sergeant. So what does that require? That sergeant to call or put up a sheet for overtime for other officers to come in and say, hey, we're short-staffed, we need you to come in. What does that accumulate? Overtime. So we're constantly paying overtime. But back to this, if you look, missed work, required medical attention, you know, you say, why are the officers getting injured? Are they tired? You know, they're working all the time because they're supposed to have days off, but they come in for court. Or if they look forward to their four-day weekend, but this year it's short, they're coming back in. Or they burn out, you know, short-staffed. I was in a class this week in Bowling Green, and I learned, I didn't know this, so any time a person has an adrenaline dump, it takes you 24 hours or more to get back to Police officer, we could have four, five, six adrenaline dumps in a shift, go home 5:00, next day we're back in at 7:00, first call out of the chute, could be adrenaline dump. So our officers really don't have a time to reprogram. They don't have a whole lot of downtime because we're constantly filling in openings. We're trying to, you know, staff the shifts the best we can. Next slide. Something we never want to talk about, never want to face, but it's reality. I hope I never have to stand up here and say, hey, you know, we lost an officer because of this. But, you know, you are aware that we've tried to implement the mental awareness and mental health for our officers. We're always trying to better that. It was, again, in this training class, Assistant Chief Nash, we may reach out, which we will, we'll reach out to Berea, they have a really good program that they implement, I'm not going to get into that, but we'll bring it to you when it's ready. But we think it's really good, their officers loved it. It's good enough that they brought this captain to make presentations to chiefs and assistant chiefs from across the state. See all that, to say this, so multiple methods must be considered to decide the staffing level. I want you to keep in mind, we found out from the workload-based staffing model suggests that one patrol officer can effectively manage between 700 to 900 calls for service per year, while many proactive policing efforts. So if we apply that to Georgetown, our current call volume for last year, 37,377 calls, suggests that the city, we would need 47 police officers to manage the workload effect. We're currently at 31. However, we know the police departments require more than just officers. We have the investigative unit, we have the traffic enforcement, we have SROs, specialized units, all to make us, you know, a well-rounded machine. Let's see. So investigate, or excuse me, investing in our additional officers now ensures the city is prepared for future increase in population and service demands, and if we increase the staffing level and ensure a safer, more resilient community while effectively managing the ongoing growth, if we increase the staffing levels now, that will provide long-term benefits, hopefully reduce crime, improve officer well-being, and strengthen the public's trust. Investing in the Georgetown Police Department now is an investment in the city's future safety and quality of life. So our next priority, I guess, would be, we'll talk about the Operations Captain. So any medium-to-large-size department in Kentucky and generally across the United States, the chain of command, as you kind of see here, there's an organizational chart. Most of those size agencies will have an administrative captain and an operations captain. So administrative is a lot like what Captain Lodel does now. He does the budget, the facilities, the hiring, recruiting, school resource officers, training, on and on, but he's also over our criminal investigation division, which is about, let's see here, with them, the school resource officers and civilians, he's over about 25, 30 people, in addition to his administrative duties. That's a lot. You know, he does a great job at it, but we figure to even things up, if we had an Operations Captain, that captain would come in, would be over patrol and criminal investigations division. That would kind of even it out. Right now, that captain would have around 58 plus or minus officers. However, he would have, as you can see, he would have five lieutenants and eight sergeants that kind of help him with that workload. So you still have your chain of command. So we need this to ease the span of control to the officers and personnel, it gives us an equal chain of command. This captain will help ensure that the patrol division, criminal investigation divisions aren't working in silos, but they're still functioning together. Right now, the patrol division lieutenants report to the Assistant Chief. There's not another level of leadership, accountability, or command. So in any major event like a armed robbery, homicide, hostage situation, disasters, anything like that, the Operations Captain would be able to coordinate the response across patrol. If we need detectives, specialized units, that captain could get the ball rolling for those officers. So without this role, our response can be fragmented, it could be slow, it could be a risk to public safety. This captain would act as a bridge between frontline supervisors and top command. They'll translate executive level priorities into action plans for the lieutenants and sergeants, and they will flag emerging issues for the leadership before hopefully they become problems. And so how does all that fit into the Georgetown Police Department? So if we had this Operations Captain, you'll be able to come in and improve field supervision and accountability. As I said, the Operations Captain would make sure that there's consistent informant of policies, performance evaluations, accountability measures, which would reduce the liability for the department. This role would also oversee the use of force incidents, body worn camera footage, pursuits, complaints, which will allow the Assistant Chief the ability to focus on strategic priorities. So right now, the Assistant Chief is over the things I just mentioned. It would be more efficient in incident command, as I said, you'd have that captain that could go out to a call, you'd have that line of supervision there to report to the lieutenant. That would keep, you know, from us to have to respond to everyone, you can trust that captain to get the job done, to communicate, let you know what you need. Of course, we're still going to come in and make sure, but better resources and personnel management. Operations Captain would take over scheduling, overtime management, personnel, and ensure proper staffing. They would collaborate directly with the Assistant Chief on budgeting, resource allocation, so forth and so on. It would allow myself more time to focus on strategic planning, partnerships, growing the department, increased availability for meetings, legislative matters, more community engagement, and so with the, same with the Assistant Chief. So here again, we're looking for a crime analyst, open records clerk, as you've heard, and we'll also throw another one on. I want to try to get a threefer out of this one. I'd like to see, of course, their primary responsibility would just be the crime analyst and open records clerk, because that's such a high demand, but we can also see where they would help our body one camera administrator, Alan. Because right now, he's the only one that we have. Now we have Officer Mather, but he's over property and evidence. So he's wearing two or three different hats. So we have other guys that can help out Alan, but you know, that's his primary job. So it'd be good to be able to give him a vacation, if he wants, you know, some days off, or if he gets sick, or if he needs to go away for a while, we have somebody that's here as their backup. So the crime analyst and open records clerk position will provide essential support to criminal investigations and the body worn camera program. The civilian role assists with digital investigations, manage surveillance equipment, prepare case materials, manage the increasing demand of open records, particularly those required video redaction. required video redaction. Creating this dual or trial role will enhance investigative efficiency by ensuring compliance to the open records laws. So we know, I'll give you some of this, so we've kind of touched on, we know that every hour of footage that our body-warned camera administrator, Alan, looks into, so every hour, it takes two hours of redacting time. So keep that in mind for a large scene where there could be five or 10 officers out there for 30 minutes to an hour, is think about how much body camera time that Alan has to go through. That's a lot for one person. Since we've implemented the body-warned cameras, we've recorded over 30,000 videos that have been submitted as evidence. So everything that we record is evidence. We can't just say, oh, we don't need that. It's evidence. Over a period of time, it's important to make sure that we follow the archive schedule that are in place for this evidence. And some of the videos can be deleted after a short time, some must be kept for many, many years, you know, homicide or something like that. Some of the videos must be archived or deleted manually, and that's why our body-warned camera analyst, Alan, needs assistance. He also has a big part in our open records. This would free him up and Officer Mather, and he could focus more back on property and evidence, because we certainly don't want to screw up chain of custody or anything like that. You know, some of the central duties that we've identified are as follows. As we said, this person could do social media, we'd have them participate in training, social media investigations to monitor covert accounts for evidence, preserve documents, legal evidence from social media platforms, ensuring adherence to the proper chain of custody. They would help with case preparation, so they'd be able to collect, analyze, and organize, and prepare background information for investigations, which will include criminal histories, vehicle data, so forth and so on. Support the body-warned camera program. So process an increase in volume of open records requests related to the body-warned camera footage, as we'll see here's, as you can see on the slide, has increased as they told you earlier. So 30 official court requests for body-warned camera footage were received in a single week. So recently, we had 30 requests. Redaction workload, as I said, reached up to 17 hours per week. Evidence review and classification regularly exceeds 10 hours weekly. So Alan is very busy with that, with the body-warned camera and the open records part. And next slide. So the crime analyst, we think this is important because as the, as the city continues to grow and our department grows, we know that some of the Part I crimes that I mentioned keep coming in, so it's very beneficial for us as officers and our detectives to be able to, you'll see this as an example here, so my friend with the FBI who's an analyst, she uses this as a teaching point. So if you have this person up here at the very top, you know, that's your very top person that you want to get to. And you look and see the names below, he or she would be able to say, hey, this person's connected to this person through this address. They're connected to this person because they drove this car. They're connected to this person because they were, used this gun, and through our NIBB report, it come back to this person. So they're able to take this right here, this analyst, analysis, they're able to do that where if we didn't have that, it would take our detectives extra amount of time away from the case to be able to put this together. So if we had somebody that could do this, that would be a big benefit, help us to get, you know, maybe quicker arrests, help us have more intelligence, because everybody loves to put stuff on social media, you know, phones and stuff like that. So we would see a great benefit in this. So again, that's the threefer and one civilian. Next is the public safety officer. So we've, again, as assistant chief and captain said, we're looking at ways to be proactive, keep providing services to the community, even ease the burden off of patrol, keep a healthy work culture with high morale. The public safety officer position will allow us to do that. So with our current challenges in hiring sworn officers, the civilian safety officer could take on more responsibilities, such as managing non-moving traffic violations, investigating minor collisions, removing vehicles from the roadway, funeral escorts, vehicle lockouts, directing traffic, parades, 5Ks. We'd be able to put, use two of those instead of having a staff and officer whose overtime rate's going to be quite a bit more. So we would have them come in and do that. We reached out to a couple of other agencies. We know Lexington's done it for years. We reached out through Richmond and Nicholasville. Both of those chiefs that I talked to were, they were very giddy. They were excited about this program that they've had. Nicholasville's had it for over 20 years. They said it's a great, the patrol officers love them to death, the community loves them because they get benefits. Next slide. Just take a look at here at the vehicle lockouts. So if we had two of these people to just go and do vehicle lockouts for us, you see we're consistently over 600 vehicle lockouts a year. Then an officer could be over here trying to tell Mr. Stone how to make his property more safe, but he has to leave and go because somebody locked their keys out. If we have a public safety officer working, that officer could spend more time with Mr. Stone, and he could, he or she could respond and unlock your call. Funeral escorts, traffic control, instead of having one or two or three of my officers that are on first shift out here directing traffic while the other two are investigating a collision, we could put one or both of these public safety officers out there to direct traffic. Again, it hopefully keeps officers freed up to answer more pertinent calls. Parking problems, motor assist, there's a whole lot more things that they can do, but that just gives you the idea. But again, this, they have their benefits, but of course, they don't have the benefits of a sworn law enforcement officer. All right? So I want to make that clear. We definitely need the officers, but I realize the needs, but we're trying to think outside the box here, say, hey, how can we help you all to help us with these two positions here? Also, can you go back to the other slide? Sorry. If you notice, we put Officer Jesse Ritchie. He was a traffic safety officer from Lexington. He applied with us. This could be a great recruiting tool for us to use. This could be an 18- or 19-year-old individual that says, hey, I might want to get into law enforcement. We hire them, they work with us for a couple of years, we know their work ethic, we know their demeanor, we know if they're going to be part of our mission, our vision, if they're going to be a good fit in the police department. If we offer that to them, we've already got them. They've been exposed to working wrecks, directing traffic, and things like that. So we see that as a benefit, and we use him as an example. Okay, so the, we call it the architectural design or the building expansion. You know, we've been in our police department, it's hard to believe, we've been there 10 years now, and we're rapidly outgrowing everything. Our criminal investigation division area is maxed out. And we know as the city grows, the cost for service increases, there'll be a need to add more detectives down the road. There'll be need to more, have more detectives that specialize in different investigations. Our chief suite, it's maxed out. So we're turning the conference room that we have in there, we're turning that into an office. So we've taken the old, let's say, the old roll call room. So it's the roll call room we initially moved into the department, which we outgrew that years ago. So we've turned that into a meeting room. Could be the command staff, it could be anybody, but it's a larger room, bigger table, more chairs. So we're, we're about out of room, but we've have sergeants, we have two sergeants currently, they're working out of closets, they were designed to be closets, but we've, you know, put carpet in there, made it an office. Our administrative sergeant is in pretty much an equipment room, so he is in there because we run out of space. We've redesigned, redesigned our patrol area to accommodate the officers more, but as we grow, you know, I could see us outgrowing that as well. You have that picture there. But I can tell you, just from up here upstairs, if you've ever been in, we have those two officers up front that we use for emergency protective orders or fingerprints or interviewing people. One of those is currently being taken up by our IT because we're out of room. So we've kept that person there. All of our sergeants from day one, there've been two, two sergeants to an office. Our recovery support team, there's three of those guys in an office. And then we have our Pari guy, he's still here with us through July, so the times, there's four in there. If you look, like, there's pictures, which I can, I didn't put them all in here for this, but I can show you pictures that shows how cramped and the space that we're running out of. So this here, we have the idea, we know that we can expand towards the parking lot, so the area drawn there in red will be the area that we would go in, approved for those plans to move forward, because that would give us, you know, more space, more offices. You know, we've been spitballing things, we kind of have ideas, but we'll put this in front of you all. Next, next slide. Okay, so next is the parking lot proposal. So up at the top left, you see the red area that's been outlined. This is the lot that the city owns, it's right across from the police department. Assistant Chief Nash reached out, and I think they said we could get around 20 or 25 parking spots in there, but we would be required to put like an island in the middle of a curb, so I assume they'd park at an angle. This is important, because if you look at the other picture there on the side, that is where the detectives, myself, assistant chief captain, sometimes our civilian employees park, the public parks there. We don't park, we can't park on Bourbon, on Bourbon in front of the police department anymore because we find out it's too hard for buses and trash trucks and all that stuff to get through, it's a tight fit. We've had a couple of vehicles that got hit because they parked on Bourbon Street, so we've started parking in the side parking lot. With the body shop across the street there, there's times that he comes in with a flatbed, it's very hard for him to maneuver in and out, so we've moved off, which has made it hard and run out of parking spaces, and some of you've may come to meetings and try to come to the police department, and parking's hard to find. We still host in-service training, so other agencies will send officers, so there's times throughout the year, I think this year, there'll be six times that we host training for the officers to get their required 40 hours. So that could be, I use a cap, I think those classes, between 25 and 30 officers. So that's 30 patrol cars from other agencies on the side parking lot up here at the top. So we push all those to the back parking lot, because you can see we're running out of space there. So on a Tuesday, which is our double-up day, or depending on what time it is, parking is a problem. So we'd like to see if we could pave that across the street and open up some spaces for us and the citizens as well. Next slide. Next is the on-call incentive for detectives. This proposal seeks to formally recognize the dedication and sacrifices of the detectives by granting them additional compensation for being on-call. So our detectives, they rotate, so however many detectives, so if there's eight, so every, once every two months, I'll be up on-call. So they're on-call from Monday to Monday. And for them being on-call, which means they have to be able to respond pretty quickly to an incident, so if we have, you know, an armed robber, or if we have, you know, a shooting or something like that where we need a detective, obviously we want them to respond quickly. So if we call them, they can't be, you know, out at the mall in Lexington, or they can't be up in Covington, they have to be pretty close to their house. You know, so by doing that, of course, we know that, they've missed, you know, sporting events, they've missed birthday parties, there's things like that because they can't go away. You know, if the family goes out and they want to have a drink, they can't have a drink because they have to come in, they're on-call. So we get that, so we want to, you know, recognize that. Now, we do have, of course, the special response team at other places or other specialized units that are on-call, but for us, if you're the detective on-call, you're expected to show up, because that's your week. So that would be like a no-show if you're called. And of course, they're frequently called by patrol section, expect to respond 24/7, given that family time, personal freedom. And think about some of the calls, we talked about the mental part, they see a whole lot of the bad stuff, all right? A lot of stuff that nobody wants to see. You know, the detectives have done a really great job. You know, we've changed the culture. You know, as they wear a shirt and tie, they look very presentable, they come to court to wear a suit. You know, I'll brag on them, there's been homicides, there's been sexual assaults, there's been all kind of cases that, you know, Commonwealth attorney that we went, took the trial, and we got the max sentencing for that. And it's because of the work that the detectives do. You know, they're bought in, they work hard, so I'd like to see us to give them. As you can see here, it's not, to me, I don't think it's that much, 13,000, a little over $13,000 for the year. So the 45.5 hours is the additional hours that they would be working per year. And I think by doing that, it keeps the morale high, keeps them engaged, keeps them to want to keep doing a good job, helps out with their work-life balance, and it's also a long-term benefit. And last, last slide please, is the career development program. We think this is important because it would recognize and financially incentivize officers who earn career development certifications through the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council. It encourages ongoing professional growth of our officers, and it helps retain, hopefully retain, these highly-trained officers that we have. You know, we're tired of seeing them get trained and get a few years here and then go somewhere else. So if we have something like this, so there's two tracks that they can go in, one's a law enforcement officer track, and the other would be a law enforcement management track. And there's about 12 categories here that the officer can go into, and if you look at them, I'll just go over the first couple ones. So you have to have, you have to obviously be a police officer, your pop certification, your intermediate law enforcement officer certificate, plus 160 hours in service, and then KLEC, they broke it down, so 40%, so if you want to be an advanced law enforcement officer certificate, you have to have 40% of your training in technical studies, 40% in human, and 20% in conceptual. And once I use a class, I can't use it again. So if I want to use, you know, homicide investigation, if I use that towards, you know, something for detective, I can't use that class again, or that, yep, that class again, it's gone. So that's 40 or 80 hours that you can't use. If you look to, it's four to 12 years of experience, plus college slash training points. So what this does is it gives officers something to, it gives them goals and something to reach forward to. If they say, hey, I want to go down this track, it's spelled out for you right here, what you have to do, the criteria you have to meet, and it's $3,500, it's capped. So once you, you can have all these 12 certificates on here, that's cool, but it's capped at So we think that would be a great incentive to maybe attract people, attract officers to want to come here, but also keep them. Again, it helps with this training, if somebody wants to go into supervisor or leadership, there's classes that they can take. It's going to benefit us, and it benefits the community. I think that's about it. Thank you all.
Thank you, that was very comprehensive.
All righty. Need to find my spot here, here we go. All right, next on the item is, we got 911 dispatch. Lieutenant, Lieutenant Moore.
Lieutenant Moore.
When's your day? Congratulations, brother.
Thank you. I'm going to motion more.
He was high.
Well deserved, I hear.
Thank you, it was.
Well, good evening. Mine won't be as long as the police department's, so I'm not calling that, he did a great job. But if you guys have any questions while I'm going through this, feel free to let me know. So divisions, pretty straightforward. We've got telecommunications, they're the 911 call-takers, they're the people on the radios that are making, sending officers to call, sending the firemen. So we have telecommunications. Their job is by far one of the hardest jobs, I think, that in public safety. You have to be able to multitask, which not a lot of people couldn't do. If I was to come back and try to be a dispatcher, I would not be able to do the job. Very hard job, and it's actually telecommunications appreciation week this week, so. On top of that, we have Terminal Agency Coordinator, that is stuff that is regulated by KSP, by the FBI, all NCIC regulations and rules. Then we have the CAD administrator, that's purely dealing with CAD systems, computers, the network, everything that officers, the firemen need to actually work. So, next slide. Sources of funding, not too many. We have the 911 fee, for the city of Georgetown. We also receive money from the state through CMRS, and we are in the local, so we're split with Scott County Fiscal Court. Next slide. So services provided, you know, PSAP is what they are. It's a public safety answering point, if you hear that term, but it's for all of Scott County. They dispatch for any agency in Scott County, all of them. Both, all three police departments, City of Els, State of Ground, Georgetown, the Sheriff's Office, all the fire departments, emergency management services, Georgetown Scott County EMA. So law, fire, EMS. And they do this every day. Every day they take these calls, nobody wants to take. They provide pre-medical instructions, CPR, to, I mean, sometimes the dispatchers are literally talking to a person on the phone, providing life-saving measures. So, next slide. Again, the revenues, there's not too much. I didn't have the information for Scott County Fiscal Court, but you can see by looking at this what is projected, what the actual was from, you know, 2023 until current. So the fee does what it's supposed to, it provides revenue for us, so we can, we can function effectively. CMRS, you know, that money goes up every year, and you can see what's projected there in 2026. So, yes.
Quick question, on the CMRS, what's that based on?
The state, it comes from the state.
Yeah, based on what?
I don't know if it's wireless, Stacy, Stacy, do you happen to know?
I think it's really not, it's probably not, we'll have to look.
Okay. Yeah, we can find out. It does, we get those every quarter, quarterly they go up, we receive payment for that. Is there any other questions about that? Next slide please. Expenditures, you know, you can see what's projected in 2026. Year, every year this goes up, it takes money to function effectively. We don't have extremely high amount of capital, but, you know, that is also going up. The contractual services, a lot of that is NICKA, AMK, these, the services that were required in order for us to function, radios and CAD and everything that has a contract or some sort of agreement. Next slide. So staffing, you know, we've come, we've come quite a way since 2020. Now, I did want to say, these part-time dispatcher positions, these aren't always filled. We fill those positions, even though they're on our personnel ordinance, we fill those with certified post-Georgetown employees. So even though they're on there, we don't necessarily, like right now, we have one part-time. Last year, we were able to get the CAD administrator pushed through, that's proven to be very, very beneficial. The amount of CAD that I've had to deal with, and then what he's learning on top of that, it's proven effective. You will see, though, on here as well, the full-time dispatcher position 2025 is listed 17. That is because it was approved at council December to get another supervisor position, so we had lost that one position. So we have two vacancies right now that we are looking to fill, that we have an ongoing process where people are coming in and testing for it. We're asking to get a, like a systems administrator. This person will take over some of the responsibilities that I, that I have, but I will get into that here shortly. The Terminal Agency Coordinator, which I talked about with, which is FBI, KSP, all things NCIC. It's a very tasking, very important job, that if we had the wrong person in there, we could lose our ability to run license plates, to run people for warrants, and do those sorts of things. Anytime anybody has a piece of property that's stolen, it goes into NCIC. And when it's in NCIC, those have to be validated. So it's a very long job. You'll see the 911 coordinator, I'm a lieutenant with Georgetown, obviously. However, next year, we're asking to get the 911 coordinator back on the personnel ordinance to, for dispatch. My lieutenant position is going to go back to the police department, where they're going to utilize it in another, another place. We're also asking for records, somebody to deal with records. Our records right now are completed by our assistant coordinator. Our assistant coordinator has I'm trying to think of the numbers, and I can pull them up for you. As of April 11th, there was 129 open records or records requests that she had, that she fulfilled. You know, there's, with those, they have to be completed within a timely manner. So, so there are a few total personnel that we're looking to, to increase. If you go to the next slide, organizational chart, pretty basic. Above me is Captain Nat, or Assistant Chief Nat.
Sorry, sir. Don't be mad.
He is, he is above me. And then I'm over Terminal Agency Coordinator and the Assistant Coordinator, and CAD administrator falls under there. And I have numbers here, it's kind of hard to see on the, on this printout PowerPoint, but there's numbers in the, in the bottom of those. But if you switch to the next one, everything highlighted in yellow is something, a change, something I'm looking, that we're looking to implement. The 911 coordinator, as I said, we're going to need that position back. I will no longer be over the 911 center. We need a records person to fulfill all the records requests, which are taxing, it takes a lot of time. The assistant TAC, as I said, very important job. It's something that she has requested to get some extra help with. In addition to the CAD administrator that we got last fiscal year, we're asking for a systems administrator to take on a lot of responsibilities and roles that I am currently doing. And then we're also asking for that one telecommunicator position back that was converted into a supervisor. So yearly, next slide. Yearly, our calls go up, our admin calls go up, our outbound calls, they go up. And calls for service, this includes police, fire, EMS, EMA, everybody. Last year total was right around 70, 70, almost 75,000 for everybody. We're looking at a total of 18,820 per quarter, and that's, that's a whole lot. We are a hopping city, I think everybody knows that. So, records request, you know, if you look at the totals from '22, '23, '24, it's increasing. We're expecting next year, we'll probably have about 450. So let's go over the strengths and weaknesses on the next slide. You know, the strengths is, we have governmental support, the city, the city is very supportive, county's super supportive, and we have some of the best personnel that you could want in any business, any agency, or anything like that. These are hard-working people, these are the people that, that bring sleeping bags when it's, when it's, they know they're going to get snowed in, and they're there for two, three days. You know, we have good technology, our radio systems, you know, is fantastic, our CAD is top-notch. So, and we have a good culture there, everybody gets along, high morale, very few issues. You know, some of the weaknesses we do have, we're out of room. Our building, our building was built in 2000, and we are at capacity. Our bunk room, where there used to be bunks in there, has been converted into a server room. There is literally no closet space available for hardly anybody. Everything is taken up by something. You know, we have limited advancement opportunities that we had in the past. We've gotten better with that, with the CAD administrator position, adding that other supervisor. You know, several years ago, we just had coordinator, supervisors, and dispatchers, and a TAC. And even then, at that time, a TAC was like a stipend, it wasn't an actual position. So we've come a long way, and, you know, we're looking to get some more advancement opportunities for dispatch. It's a scope of the work, you're going to get stressed out, get yelled at all day, listen to people in their crisis. It's a tough job, not everybody can do it. So burnout, burnout can be a problem. And the, and the growth of the, of the city is, it's been said before, and he, Chief illustrated it earlier, I mean, it's just increasing. So, you know, some of the opportunities, we, you know, training, we'd love to have more training. You know, the new positions would also allow for more opportunities, and it'd be more efficient with more, with more personnel, especially in those specialized areas. You know, opportunity if we had a larger dispatch center, plan for expansion. You know, what's the city of Georgetown going to look like here in 15 years? I don't want to think out that far, but man, we are just growing so much, and, you know, we need to stay up with, with the growth. You know, the threats, increasing call volumes, the loss of employees to other careers, something that pays higher, that's not as stressful, it's not a 24/7 operations like we currently are. Technology's constantly changing, always got to stay up to date with that. And then, you know, I put it on here too, cybersecurity, I mean, all sorts of. Next slide. So some of the goals and objectives, obviously, we want to hire more people. We want to fill those vacancies with qualified people. We're pretty stringent on who we accept and hire, but we also want to attract other candidates from other agencies. You know, some of the new positions that I'll go over, we want to reinstate that one telecommunicator position. We want to reinstate the 911 coordinator position. We want to add a position to fulfill records. We want to add an assistant terminal agency coordinator position. And we also want to add that systems administrator to take care of radios, CAD, do data analysis, be in charge of these other applications that, that are piled on, somebody who's already has, is taxed. We want to, you know, retain our current and future employees. And we want to do those, you know, immediately, this coming fiscal year, so. I don't know if I touched on the building, but that's, that's something we want to look at next fiscal year. You know, how are we going to do that, you know, our hiring, we want, ideally, we'd like to get 15 good, fully-completed applications with two or three, you know, certified applicants. Let's bring these people in here. You know, all that personnel that I talked about, you know, we, we want a 100%, 100% accuracy, they've got to be accurate. The systems administrator position that, that I talked about would be over, you know, program radios. They would do the things that I currently do. And trying to keep that all 100% and accurate, that's something that, that will be, it's, it's hard to do with all the other roles, responsibilities that, that I have and that other people have. You know, the new building, we need to conduct that needs assessment, you know, within the next 12 months, next fiscal year, and then, you know, ideally, a performance measure on, you know, personnel retention is, like to keep 100% of all the new hires, and we want them to successfully complete training. Once you get in there and you do the job of a telecommunicator, which I would not be able to do, by the way. So if I, if I apply to be a dispatcher after I retire in August, do not hire me, because I cannot do it. But, you know, getting all these people to successfully complete training, so. Next slide. Just joking, that's all I got. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Minkie. CMRS stands for Commercial Mobile Radio Service. It's 911 fee that is drawn by the state from cellphone companies. So that's what that acronym, that's what that acronym is for. Thank you.
We used to have a landline, the fee that came for landlines, but as the landlines, I didn't think that was, was too much money, the landlines started dropping off, we started losing money.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Moore, thank you, Chief Allgood, Assistant Chief Nash. Captain, thank you all so much for the presentation and getting us up to speed and up to date on some of your ongoing things and what you're going to need going forward.
Thank you.
Let's move first to, next is the council committee reports, and I think I have police. Okay, ready?
Sure.
Alright.
Thank you, Mayor, and I won't duplicate a lot of the things that we've already heard tonight, but we did have a meeting on April 7th, and all of our committee members were present. I'll just touch on the topics that we talked about, and you'll see the connections to what we heard about tonight, as well as, I'm sure, what we're going to hear about as we continue with the budget. But we did hear information about the 911 Dispatch Center, that was one of the requests that we had, because we had not heard anything about 911 needs and so on. We did talk about the public safety officer concept and the, how that fits into the bigger picture, which I think was a great validation of what we heard tonight. The other thing that we talked about was parking on Main Street and the potential maybe for down the road of a parking authority to be able to function appropriately within the law and under the new interpretations and things like that. So maybe something for us to consider in the future. And then obviously, the update of kind of where we were with budgets and manpower and all that. The, the final thing that we did talk about, Kim Valdez brought in some information around the SANE examiner, which is the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner, and the potential for that type of service to be localized. And again, that was just some information that was shared with, with the committee. So that's an abbreviated summary.
Thank you, Mr. Minkie. Next, we have fire committee.
Yes, we had a special call committee meeting, and that was on April 10th. Yes, we had a special call committee meeting, and that was on April tenth, and Mayor was there, myself and Michael Crisp and CAO Devin Golden and City Attorney Emily Lutron, fire chief, and many of the other people. I don't see any of the fire people here tonight, so they can't correct me if I'm wrong. The main emphasis that was talked about was the need for a truck. Chief Thompson and Assistant Chief Seth Johnson were giving an update, a very needed update, for the current status of Truck One, which is the city's primary ladder truck. And there's significant amount of out-of-service time that has been happening over the last few years, and all of the ongoing costs, and all of these costs for...
Your mic's off, sorry.
Oh, sorry. And all of these...
Costs going up, as you might imagine. So, since Truck One's reliability, unreliability has been an ongoing problem, the department's reserve ladder was emphasized as well, and so we have to have a very needed conversation about purchasing a truck. And it would not be a truck that we would be able to personalize, because that takes a lot longer to get. It would probably need to be a truck that is already put together. I don't know if that's the official way to say it, but, so get ready, because that will be one of the things that, of necessity, they're going to ask for in the next budget. Also, in general, updates, we've had a lot of flooding in the state, and I'm, I'm proud to say that some of our firefighters were dispatched, I believe to Bowling Green, three of them went there. And also, there are two current openings in the department. We also had a code enforcement update. There's a vacant code enforcement officer position that has now been filled, so that's, that's very good, good news. And then we talked a little bit about land banking and how it might help at some point with vacant properties to some kind of productive use. It's a very complex, it's a very complex topic, but if at all possible, we could look towards doing some land banking to do some affordable housing and those kinds of things. So it's a, it's a potential strategy that we might use for housing needs as we go forward. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have finance, which was, was put off from last meeting to this meeting, so...
Thank you, Mayor. This was a regular scheduled finance committee meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. All committee members were present, along with the mayor's staff. We approved the minutes from the February seventeenth meeting, and we also discussed the, the Stockyards Bank CD renewal, and that was approved at the last council meeting. And the council pay schedule, there is, we have the second reading of an ordinance tonight to approve that. That will, that will save about six thousand annually, and it will move the council members from a monthly pay schedule to a, to a bimonthly, or, yep, biweekly, sorry, biweekly, yes, thank you. Next, on the agenda, we discussed the nonprofit agency funding policy, which was brought before the, the last council meeting, and it was approved. For the twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six budget discussion, we talked about the different COLA scenarios for the twenty-five and twenty-six budget, and also, we reviewed the parks and rec and planning and zoning budgets that were submitted for us. And let's see, I believe, under general discussion, we talked about the net gain technologies contract and the upcoming costs associated with that, and we adjourned.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have item number nine, which is the second reading, readings, and it's, A, the personal ordinance amendment, sponsors were Kim Minkie and Karen Tingle Sams, and all right, up and ready, and...
Sure, I'm just here if you have any questions.
Yes, of course, as you all know, this was, was adding to police officers, to that, which was brought to that. So if there's no questions, I'll let you go ahead and read the...
An ordinance amending section two dash six zero of the Code of Ordinances regarding personnel. Summary, one, amends exhibit B of section two dash sixty subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to increase the number of police officer positions from fifty-five to fifty-seven within the Georgetown Police Department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, six twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Publicly read the second time April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
At this, at this time, council, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Sam, second by Mr. Minkie. Other further questions and or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Minkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sams?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B was the council compensation ordinance amendment, sponsors Greg Hampton and Tammy Mitch, Tammy Lesby Mitchell, who, he mentioned earlier, this was the change from monthly pay to biweekly.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirteen dash zero zero eight to establish a biweekly pay schedule for the members of the Georgetown City Council. Summary, one, amends ordinance number thirteen zero zero eight to switch the pay schedule for members of the Georgetown City Council from monthly to biweekly. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, six twenty-nine North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Publicly read the second time April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Hampton, second made by Ms. Mitchell. Other further questions and or comments?
Comment, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I believe this is, this is a great opportunity for efficiency improvement and cost reduction of processing.
Thank you. Any other comment or question?
A question. If this goes into effect, when would the, when would it take effect?
The first peril in May. I don't know the exact date, but the very first one in May.
Okay.
Are there any other questions and or comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sams?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Minkie?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mr. Crisp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, item ten, the first reading of the South Sewer Extension Ordinance, sponsors Willow Hamburg and Todd Stone.
I believe we do have some slides, but tonight, we have a service area ordinance for you for the, it's related to the South Sewer Extension project. More specifically, this ordinance will identify which properties will be served by the South Sewer Extension infrastructure. So, if we could go to the first slide, please. Origins of this project, they predate me as general manager at Georgetown Municipal. However, the project went from concept to reality back on April twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-one, when the construction contract for Howell Construction was authorized to be executed by the city council. Back that, that point, we had, four of our current council members were here for that action, and the Board of Commissioners of the Georgetown Municipal Administrative Board, they also approved that contract back in April of twenty-one. As part of that approval process, we pledged at that time to create this ordinance for the infrastructure close to the time when the project was going to be closed out. And as that project's winding down, we thought it was highly appropriate to bring this to you all for your consideration. So what does it do? What, why do we need it? What's the purpose behind it? Since we started working on this effort, one of the concerns, if not the biggest concern or hesitation, was that if we install sewer infrastructure south of the Green Belt in the US twenty-five corridor, are we going to open that area up to just unlimited growth? That was a big concern. It's talked about then, and I still hear about it now. And one of these longstanding values that I've heard about since I've been here is that it's held by city, county residents, is that we want to protect our Green Belt, and that's that boundary on the south side of the city we want to manage, or I like the term manage better than limit, but we want to very well manage what, what happens between the Green Belt, which is the southern boundary, boundary of the city, between there and the southern boundary of the county. So, you know, one of the things that, that I heard, quote, heard it over and over again, we don't want US twenty-five turning into Nicholasville Road. So that Green Belt, it was discussed at the, on all of the comp plan update, it's been included in comp plans, multiple plans, it was included and updated in the most recent plan. So how do we address this concern? And we wanted to do it in two ways. First one, doesn't really have anything to do with the ordinance, but the first thing is we didn't size the infrastructure for ultimate build-out of that corridor, that sewer shed. That goes against normal planning logic. We didn't, we didn't size that for that ultimate build-out. We, we sized it smaller than that. Again, not normal way for planning a project, but we felt like that was appropriate with this project in this very sensitive area. So we sized that infrastructure south of the Green Belt, in the Green Belt, it's actually south of the Green Belt. We sized that infrastructure for the mobile home park and build-out of the Sawyer Point, and then existing structures, that's who can tie on, and, and those are identified in this ordinance. There were a few projects that were, we were aware of at the time of planning that were kind of outside those parameters, and I'll give you examples, two off the top of my head. One was at the time, we did know that Grace Baptist, or Grace Christian Church was going to do an expansion for their resource center, their outreach center, so we accounted for that. We knew that was coming. I don't think that was something that anybody has a problem with, so we accounted for that flow. There was also some commercial properties on the road frontage side of the mobile home park on US twenty-five, that's where the shed squad and the nursery are located now. Owner of the property did say, hey, if I'm going to give you easements, I want to stub out for this property. It's not going to be a major development, but I'm going to have something there. So we did that. So the second part of how we alleviate that concern is through this approach of a service area ordinance, and we pledged to bring that to the city council, and we, we documented those properties that are going to be permitted to tie on. So the memo that I handed out, I meant to have that in the council packet, but I handed that to each one of you and the clerk, that was actually what was included in the approvals package back in April of twenty-twenty-one. So it was kind of a document saying, we commit to do this, and, but we want to wait till the project's closed, so we feel like it's more appropriate in case something changes that we're not locked in. So we, we just put that as a kind of a placeholder in the approvals package back in twenty-twenty-one. I wanted to make sure you all had that tonight, so. If we could go to the next slide, please. So here's, here's where we are. I took a shot at drafting an ordinance on a service area, which I've not done before, so I got that done, I worked on that middle of last year into the fall, and, and then, thankfully, I brought our outside counsel, and, and the city attorney was willing to help me and clean that up and make sure that it was right, much better form than what you have tonight. In the ordinance, it details with mapping and a list exactly which properties can connect to this infrastructure, and so you have that in your, your council packet. You also have a copy of meeting minutes from back in August, from our Board of Commissioners saying they supported this effort. Full disclosure, there have been some updates, once I brought in Todd and Emily to help me with this, there are some updates to this from when the board saw it back in August. But this is a city effort, so if I need to take that back to get their, their approval for that or their support for that, I can do that if it's even necessary. But I do know that they are in support of a service area ordinance, limit, limits the properties that can tie on, and so I'll stop there and take questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Chase, just a clarification. The list, exhibit B, I talked to you before, actually, the meeting started, all of these have potential tie-ons, some are in the city, some are in the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, but, did you tell me it was only the existing structure that they have?
If it is south of the Green Belt, it is only the existing structure that's on the property.
And south of the Green Belt would be pretty much past the...
South of the Tributary of Canran Creek, that's what makes up that boundary.
Okay, that's, that's south of the churches, the two churches there, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
The church, then, is it a veterinary clinic on the east side of twenty-five?
The, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's south of that.
Okay, because it's not in the ordinance, it doesn't kind of specify that in the ordinance, and I was just wondering if that's needed to be more specified in the ordinance or not?
As far as existing structures, if we wanted to beef that up, we certainly could. I think that there's a second part of this process, and that goes to the Board of Commissioners, meaning the availability request process.
Okay.
That's where the flow actually is requested for development, and the board considers that, so the board would consider that against what flow we predicted in sizing the infrastructure. So I feel like that's where that gets taken care of, but if you feel like that is appropriate for the ordinance as well, I think that's a good note, and I think that's an easy change for us to make.
That would, that would, if the council so wishes to add that to it, then that would, that would clarify it better, and then there's not the room for negotiation on things, if we really want to keep that more of a green space.
That is belt and suspenders. So, and I'm, I'm happy to make those updates if, if that's what the council wants, and if, if you want to see that kind of south of the Green Belt, it's existing structures only, with a few exceptions that we've already made.
Right.
I'm, I'm happy to make those revisions and bring that back for a first reading at a, at a future meeting, but however, if you feel better about that, that's, that's a good approach, good note.
Is that a substantial change?
I don't, I don't think that's a substantial change.
I think it's a clarification, in my, in my opinion. I think it's a clarification.
So council, at this time, would it be something to, to recol, with, with, with go the first reading and then bring it back? We know these changes are made, well, what does need to be here? Emily?
I, I don't think that's a substantial change to the contents of the ordinance.
Okay.
Like you said, it's just clarifying what's already not out there.
Okay.
So you don't, I don't think you have to do another first reading to restart it.
Okay.
Do I need to amend and put that language in?
I would, I would recommend, I would do a motion and just capture the amendment you'd like to see made, so you could just clarify.
Okay.
And if I could piggyback on that, it may not be a bad idea, if you wanted to do that, to put in there perhaps GPS coordinates or something. So say, for instance, if in a hundred years, those buildings aren't there, the GPS coordinates would always be there. So, if, if you wanted to move forward with that.
If the building's not there, does that change, because it's existing structures, which is what I'm trying to make sure, that's what I'm understanding? If the buildings are not there, then no longer, you don't have existing structures.
I...
At the time of the reading, right?
That, that's the way I would take this, is, but if, again, if I need to, if I need to clear that up, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
So just point of clarification, from my understanding, so given how this started with the trailer parks and how they overlap with the county line, it, it looks like we do have properties in Fayette County that are included in this as well, and will be subject to all of that. I guess my question is, does that create any... I guess my question is, does that create any issue because of the county lines?
Is there something we need to research or...
It's something I'd have to research to give you, and I'd have to talk to Emily and Todd to get a legal opinion on that.
I mean, just a question. I mean, I've been opposed to it, but just to make sure that it's, it's there if need be.
Any other questions?
Let me, I'm sorry, let me, on this map here where it does show the line. We do have these property, this property included. And then this is part of the Sawyer Point. So this is included, but this is a different property owner and it is also included. You also have to think about, we included capacity for a second mobile home park that is further south into Fayette County. It's Maple Grove. And, but I think we're covered there via, I don't know whether it's a, it wouldn't be an ordinance, but an agreement with LFUCG that they included funding for the project such that if they ever wanted to bring that flow to us, we could accept it. We don't have to build the infrastructure.
Right.
We just sized our infrastructure large enough to accommodate for that.
And that's whatever the capacity of that Maple Grove, the park is, based on where it is today.
Based on the number of...
Or at that time.
The number of slips today. I, I'd have to look back. It is an agreement between City of Georgetown and LFUCG, and we might be a party to it as well. I, I'd have to look back, but I don't know if it was for the number of slips currently, but it, it wasn't for an expansion of that park.
Yeah. Because I, I think it kind of goes back to part of what Karen's talking about, existing versus, you know, what's available or what's platted.
I'm, I'm happy to, to move forward with this in whatever way. If this is something that's not substantial enough of a change that requires a rewrite, that's fine. If you do want to rewrite, I'll do that too.
So if it...
All good notes.
So if it doesn't require much of a change, can we not go and do that tonight?
So if the research comes back and says something contrary to what's proposed, that would be a substantial change. So I would recommend, you know, if you want to have a first reading tonight, we can do that research and make recommendations, you can go ahead and make it and then amend if we have to.
And then amend if we have to.
Like council, or you could, you go with...
Or if you just want to, you can go ahead and delay it also.
Okay.
If you wanted to delay it, and there's, this is, I mean, if it's not, I have to get it done, and then you can get both Kim's and mine taken care of and, and figure that out.
So you, so you want to, just go ahead, first reading or you want to delay it?
Delay it, and then they can make sure that they got what Kim's asking and, and mine covered.
So council, we good with doing that, with making this a delay and making those particular changes?
I would just make a motion to defer this staff for research.
So I, so at this...
You've not done the first reading yet, so there's to defer.
Okay. So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion for that.
Motion to make that we defer to, to these changes have been made, amended to that. Do I have a, made by Ms. Samp to have a second? Been made by Mr. Menke. Are there further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify? Yes.
Before, before you go, can I just say it's, we want clarification on existing structures south of the Green Belt, possibly a GPS location of the structures. And then we want some research on properties, how this impacts properties located in Fayette County.
If, if there's any issue.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Good notes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other? Okay, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise? Thank you, so we'll...
If I may say one thing about Maple Grove, you mentioned Maple Grove, that has been a big problem. We were talking about cleaning up our problem going into our water. Maple Grove has not been very great about, because they dump into our aquifer too. And that really does need to be fixed and cleaned up unless they've done improvements in the last 10 years.
I would agree with you, and I, I'm not aware of any improvements.
Okay.
I have had some potential buyers call and request about how they could tie on, but that's still a pretty long stretch of sewer that somebody would have to find.
Find, but it really does need to get done.
All right. Thank you. Item number 11, Bennett and Williams for $13,600.
This is a purchased order. It's related to our software upgrades of our GIS system that we use. This is Esri ArcMap and ArcReader. Both of those programs are being phased out by Esri and replaced with a newer software called ArcProbe. And we use GIS for almost everything we do. Our work order system is GIS-based, as is all of our database and storage of all of our system data. This is not a specific budgeted purchase because at the time we developed our budget that we're currently in, we didn't know that the software was going to be phased out. So we're going to pay for this out of our remaining IT budget, which we have about, that's just over $25,000 left, and we're nine and a half months through the fiscal year. So I think we're in good shape to pay for it there. We need to start this ASAP to make the migration from the old software to the new software.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Britt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Hambrick. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion for Bennett and Williams for $13,600, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise? Thank you. Next, we got item 12, Finance Department Municipal Order for the Lane Runs Business Park Phase Three Georgetown Municipal Water Sewer Service Sewer Privilege Fee.
Yes, when we, as the city, act as the developer, such as when we expand lanes around Business Park, we did it with Phase Two, now we're doing it with Phase Three, there is a privilege fee agreement that exists, so we're subject to that same fee like other developers. This is just under $145,000. This will be split between the city and the county, with the city's half being funded by Phase One land sales, which belonged just to the city. So it won't take any general revenues. This was approved as part of our mid-year budget amendment, so just presenting this. And again, this was outside of the KPDI project, which just covered the design and construction.
At this time, I maintain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Kimpy, Mr. Menke, thank you.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, Municipal Order, the Lane Runs Business Park Phase Number Three Georgetown Municipal Water Sewer Service Sewer Privilege Fee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the City Engineer, the Municipal Order for some surplus items that I think he's going to try to get rid of, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have some old traffic modeling equipment that we no longer use, and it's just taking up room, and we wanted to surplus it and, and sell it to whoever may be interested in purchasing it.
All right. At this, at this time, a motion made by Ms. Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second made by, I'm going to give it to Mr. Chris this time.
That's fine.
All right. Second made by Mr. Chris. Other further questions and or comments? All those in favor of the motion, the Municipal Order for surplus item, City Engineer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, the number 14, Council Discussion, Old Business is to back our chickens, okay? We have heard some of them come to tonight talking about back our chickens. Is there any, anybody wants to discuss about that?
Our young people all had to go to bed.
Yeah, they didn't want to say anything like they do in their bedtime.
I, I just would like, we've had a discussion as the sponsors, and I wondered if you could fill in the council on what we talked about. You know, the fact that we have everything that we need as far as what we would like to see, but we're working out the administrative parts before we bring it back to council.
Yeah, I think, and I believe we sent something out to your, that you on that as to what we're trying to do. Long story short, we want to make sure that, you know, that we get the right information. Needs more research on this. You know, we've heard from, you know, people coming in at public comments, we've heard people doing the petition and so on, and, but we haven't heard from people that oppose this idea. You know, I've heard from a couple, and I don't know if you've heard some, some too. But there are some unknowns. There are some people we need to bring to the table, such as, you know, you talk about code enforcement, you talk about the police, you're talking about health. And, you know, you, these people got to come to the table so we get information. The thing that I don't want to see happen is this, you know, if this ordinance passed, it is my job and my staff's job to implement this and enforce it. So I want to be able to be able to do this. But right now, what we have here, we can't really enforce it, and it's not fair to the staff to, to, for us to make that happen. Because there are going to be some things that's going to come up that we never thought of. So we want to make sure that we get everything that we need so that when we bring this ordinance back to you all, that is something where we know that we can implement and do a good job of enforcing that. All right? So that's the reason why we have to...
Yes, sir. One thing we need to look at, and this is, this is the other side of the sword that we're going to be dealing with. You let chickens in? Well, you let chickens in, I want dairy goats. I can't get cow's milk. I can't drink it because of that. I can drink goat milk. I want goats. Okay? You brought goats in, I want cows in. It's, it's a dangerous thing if you let one. You can't, you, you open yourself up that the others are going to come in.
Mr. Menke?
Yeah, I, I guess one of the questions I have is, okay, we have an ordinance now. Why do we have an ordinance now? What was the, what happened that resulted in having the ordinance? So if, if we know that, then what's changed to be able to then go forward with this?
I can either.
Or, or what the issues are and those kinds of things? So I think that, that's one. And then, as you said, Mayor, you know, where are the other pieces of this? You know, animal control or Health Department and those kinds of things? The other question I have is, okay, if, if everybody doesn't compost the waste, how do, how do we manage the waste? Does that go to republic? And if so, if it goes into republic, how is it to be managed and those kinds of things to be able to protect everybody involved? So, I mean, just those kinds of details of implementation, I'm not sure that we've gone all the way through that, so.
Ms. Samp?
Well, the livestock issue came many, many, many years ago. But the last time we had a conversation about it was, how long ago was that? When we had our pig conversation. It was all about pigs. It came up about whether people could have pot-bellied pig, that they had pigs, supposed to be small pot-bellied pigs, indoor pigs, and they became big. And then the neighbors had to deal with the mess of a pig and the sound of the pig and noise of the pig. So that's the last time we had looked at this was over the pigs, however many years is it, six years ago maybe? Could it have been that long ago?
It was Tammy.
When was it?
It was Tammy and I's first time.
Okay, okay.
So that's 2018.
So the pigs became a big issue. Now, the chickens are a little bit different than the pigs because they got popular because people want to do home farming with it. But, you know, it could be opening the door, and there are a lot of questions on it. I think that's a good, good question that Kim has, getting rid of the waste and things like that. And apparently, there's a lot of people in town that didn't know that we had an ordinance now that says it can't. And we have, now that we've been talking about it, people are telling on their neighbors they do have chickens now that aren't supposed to have. So currently, we have a lot of people validating our current ordinance. So, you know, but that's where we were, and that's now we're here, so.
And isn't going to be a difference with the school, like the school came in?
And it's, you know, it's in educational purposes or something like that. I mean, you know, that's now something they've made you think about, that's a possibility or something. But at least a good thing, aid and prices are going down, but nevertheless.
So what I would say is this, that we had over 400 people sign a petition that were interested in raising chickens. That's what happened. They called and asked, how would somebody go about changing an ordinance that's currently in place? And I told them, this is the process. And so they came and, and they asked, you know, what would, what would be helpful? Would it be helpful if we gathered information? We're not, they're not talking about, nor are we, talking about pigs or cows or goats. We're talking about people that want to raise chickens in a limited way, and many other counties surrounding us are doing that. And it's really not up to the people that asked, they simply wanted to know, how do you try to change the law? And their concern is not, how do you enforce it on the back end, but how do you change the law? That should be our concern, and there are people that need to come to the table to answer those questions. But you ask, you know, how did it come about? We had somebody bring a petition that had over 400 people that were interested in doing it.
Just one other comment, it's actually bringing it to the table and changing the law is the easy part. What the mayor has to do with the enforcement is the hard part. And so with what he's going to be faced with, because we can't even enforce the ordinances we have in City for Dogs.
Or fireworks.
Or fireworks. So how, how are we going to do chickens? And, and so he's right on that. That's why he's being cautious and I applaud him for doing that, to make sure there is enforcement to it. Because if there's not enforcement, it's not going to work, and you're going to have 400 people that are happy with it, and you're going to have 4,000 or not. It's just, if there's not a enforcement process, because there's always going to be somebody that's going to do it absolutely right, and then there's going to be five people that's going to do it absolutely wrong. So the mayor's right, get the enforcement in place, and then we can go back to considering what we do or how we do it. But if you can't enforce it, then...
And I agree with Karen. This is something that we have battled for years. I've been gone out of law enforcement for 10 years. 22 years before that, we have battled with getting animal control to take care of things in the city. They have numerous animal control officers. They're employed by the county. We have one for the city. And they're usually sent out in the county to work as well. Nothing wrong with that. But if it is not handled by animal control, then it goes to code enforcement. Code enforcement shouldn't be dealing with this. This is an animal control issue. But it's going to fall to code enforcement, and it's going to fall to somebody else, and it's going to fall to somebody else. So, you know, there's way too many what-ifs with this, and I think it's a slippery slope that we're going to go down if, if we approve this. And, and, you know, I, I don't have a problem with it. But I think it's a slippery slope that we're going to go down because if you do it for chickens, what's next? You know, we've already been, had discussions about the horses at the Jennings Farm that's going to try to be in the city limits, you know? There's horses, and it may be goats, and it may be cows, and it may be on and on and on. And I know we're discussing chickens, I know we're discussing chickens, but that's the slope we're going to be on. Where do we draw the line and stop it?
And, you know, I would say that if you, if you take the time that's needed to see how we would enforce it, and then we bring it back, that what I told these people, this is the process, and the process could also end in that we vote against it. So what, what I would like to see, and what I've been assured from the mayor, is that let us have a little bit of time to put these things in place, and then we'll bring it back just like we asked for it to be done, and then you can vote no if you think it's a slippery slope, you can vote no, that the process will take place. As citizens ask, how do you change the law? Here's how you do it. So let's do it. You know, let's get our stuff in order, and, and then we can vote it up or down. And we don't have to talk about it, you know, every time and wear it out. We just need to give... give the time that we need to, to the mayor to take care of the other end of it and then bring it back and we can each decide what we want to do.
Thank you. Again, like I said, I want to make sure that we don't set us up, set us up, set us up, set us up for failure with this, and, and that's the main thing. We want this to be where we can get it right, and if not, this is not, and this is going to reflect on everything we do going forward. And, you know, and so, however we do this, we want to make sure it's done right, okay? All right.
And thank you, because I think that, that tells the people that came tonight where we stand on it, and that, that's what I was asking for, is just so that they would know where we stand.
Sorry, I did want to add, I know the gentleman who spoke with all the precious children, he mentioned that those kids wrote you all letters, they delivered those to our office late this afternoon, and I will scan those and get them out to you all so you can all have copies. It was, you know, drafted to the full council, I think each of them was, so I just wanted to note that those will be in your inboxes tomorrow.
Thank you.
Did they put the little faces on them and everything, sad faces or anything like that on?
Chicken.
Okay, all right, that's good. All right, is there any other thing of that? So, let's talk now, item B, new business? Is there any new business to be brought before this council?
I never know at this point if new business is substantially different from council comments, so I'll, I'll just say a couple things. There, there's significant road erosion on 460 going west, and I realize that's a state road, but it's actually encroaching into the road. It's, do you know where I'm talking? It's, it's.
Hold on, come up here, Eddie, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If, if you're going out of town, it's, you're going west.
West, okay.
It's, it's, I think it's before the, the water company.
Like the ditch lines have washed out?
Yeah, I mean, it's encroaching on the yellow line, and so, I'm afraid a tire or a car is going to go, because some of those ditches are, are pretty significant in that area. So, I don't know if we, we need to report it to the state.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll run by there, I'll run by there, and then we'll call that into the state.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you would send me an email.
Yeah, I just, I just became.
Okay, well, just send me an email, that way I can forward to him here.
Please.
For that email with that.
That helps.
As documentation so that somebody can point to that this day, okay?
Yeah, we track all these calls. Thank you. Thanks for letting me know.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Yes?
Yeah. Last week, I was driving in the Washington Street area and noticed, I know we've talked about sidewalks a lot, and you guys, even before I was part of council, had talked ad nauseam about sidewalks, but I noticed a couple people with mobility issues able to get up onto the sidewalks over there near the pavilion until they got farther down by the police station, and then there were some curbs that didn't have ramps, and they then had to keep their scooters out into the street, and there were, there was traffic behind them, you know, actual cars. And so, it would be, it would be nice as we keep discussing and looking forward to sidewalk renovations and plans to at least in that area and other areas with those type of similar situations, at least have ramps going up onto the sidewalks. It would help for the safety of these citizens. A lot of them are elderly, some of them also have mobility issues. So, just, just a suggestion.
Okay, okay. Any other new business? All right. Council comments, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, sir. I had a citizen today that wanted to, wanted to shed some light and praise Sam Waite of code enforcement, said that he is doing a phenomenal job and represents Georgetown well, and he deserves a huge pat on the back for that, and I wholeheartedly agree with the job that Sam does. Also, Police Department touched on it briefly, is National Telecommunicators Week, there are very few people know what they go through and what they have to listen to. I've heard it on recordings. Brian Moore said he couldn't do it, I won't do it. It's, it's a job worse than a police officer, so, and I've seen some weird, some crazy things in my time, but I don't want to be on the other end of a telephone and listening to it. So, they are true unsung heroes for this, so I want to make sure that they wear, that we do celebrate them for National Telecommunicators Week, so, and that's it.
Ms. Mitchell.
All good.
Mr. Hampton?
I have nothing.
All right, Ms. Bren.
I have two things. I want to first thank all the first responders that worked during the storms, the water. I mean, I know you had to work long hours and it was difficult, but I appreciate everything you done for the city, that, for all the first responders and Road Department, any, anybody there. And then I have a constituent that called about two cracked garbage cans. They said they called and said that they couldn't get them till the end of the year, I don't know, they're making up or whatever like that. But I'll give the mayor the address and then he can get that to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hambrick?
Appreciate the really good reports from dispatch and police, very thorough and lots to, lots to think about, and I know it takes a lot of time to do that. I had a constituent call and ask if telephone numbers are available, if somebody can't find them online, if Wendy could give out a telephone number. I don't know if that's possible to do for the, if a constituent's trying to get ahold of a published number of a council member or whatever. There's been some frustration with them trying to find how to call, so I don't know how possible that is or how available those numbers are, but that was one constituent. And we had a lot of flooding and I appreciate Public Works, the cleanup, I mean, we got lucky. Our cleanup's been minimal, but we've been busy and, and I know that, that they've worked really hard to do that, even with, with you all catching up on your routes as well, so. And an update on City Hall would be nice.
Okay. We are, we'll get that scheduled. All right. Ms. Menke.
City Hall was the only thing I had on my list. Thank you.
All right.
The presentation from the Police Department was very thorough, very nicely done, and when you were talking about 911 expansion and the Police Department expansion, impact fees would come in awfully handy for that. If we're going to be able to hire all the new officers over time that they are seeking, then the impact fees will pay for the building and the new 911 center that we're going to have, so just as soon as you can get that, gets, I'll be pushing every time for to get that together.
All right.
But I just wanted to say that when you all were talking about this, what I was thinking, impact fees were perfect for that. That's it, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Chris.
Yeah, one quick thing. Growing up in Georgetown, I always enjoyed the pride of seeing state championship signs on, you know, little placards on the different signs that we would see as we'd drive around. And over the last few years, I don't, I don't seem to see those as much, maybe they're still there and I just don't drive in those areas. We have gotten fairly big over the last 40 years or so, so, but in light of the Warhawks accomplishment and then also Scott County High winning championships recently, it would be nice as we explore future signage, I know we've talked a little bit about updating the George, Welcome to Georgetown sign, it'd be nice to think about adding some small signs in there as well to commemorate the, the accomplishments that we've had in, in that regard too.
All right. All righty, if there's no other to be brought to this council, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, sir.